Yeah, I haven't heard from him. He and I don't know what his name is.
Good. You get to do the voice the same.
Yeah.
That guy just sat talking.
Judge, jury, and I see you.
Well, they did not go through the bigger hearing, but the Senate comes in. Down like the prophet, he goes, be my case and be his case.
Yeah, I haven't heard from him. He's normally, he's normally pretty, pretty prompt.
Yeah.
We got those early mornings? You still in Steve?
Uh, that's my area. Yep. Yeah, I gotta work Saturday too.
Oh, really?
Yeah, no break this month here.
You got money there? What was I gonna say?
That's my busy fact, 'cause all the schools are empty. I can get in there. Vacations in summer.
Could be around. There he is. There he is. I was just about to text you. Exchange.
Oh, you went? Oh. I didn't think I could do both.
No.
How was it?
It's tight, obviously. You're seeing that I'm walking in there.
Yeah, no, I didn't think I could do both.
You have the mercy of when they bring the meal.
Yeah.
What'd you have? Chicken salad or whatever.
Nice.
Oops, sorry. This is your day, he's not gonna be here. Maybe zooming in.
Who?
Uh, John is on.
Oh, he's on the screen.
Oh, he is.
He's already up. So you can move over if you don't wanna feel, uh... Or maybe you don't wanna move.
I oughta be out of the picture.
Oh, no, come on. All right. We're almost ready. Seven twenty-nine. All right.
Ready?
Recording in progress.
We're good? I don't see me on the screen.
There you are.
Oh, we're there. Okay. All right, the time is seven thirty. I will call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all please rise.
Pledge of Allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic, in which stand one nation, united as one.
All right. The next item on tonight's agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of February second, two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, have you all reviewed the minutes? Any errors, changes, or omissions? If so, I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes from February tw- second.
I'll second that.
Uh, all right, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the minutes of February second, two thousand and twenty-two. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. The next item is to accept the agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we accept the agenda.
Thank you, Sean.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bobby. A motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Um, un... Under communications and correspondence, I did receive a letter from the State Department of Transportation informing us that they will be paving Route seventeen this summer, which is good news. From approximately the four-corner intersection to all the way through Glastonbury. And one of the things that they will be doing is they're going to be installing, uh, what's, what they call centerline rumble strips. And I'm sure you guys have seen those rumble strips in the past, but, uh, there have been several accidents on, on that road. So, um, so I think that's a very good thing, and, uh, you know, we look forward to, uh, that installation over the summer. Um, with that, I think we can move to public comment. Is there any public comment? No? All right, so we'll move on to old business. Uh, the Committee on Solidarity, April Graves, and... Is here to speak tonight, uh, on the committee. Thank you, April.
Hello, everyone. So the Committee on Solidarity actually has a lot going on. Um, I met with Ryan yesterday with Selectman Hernandez also. Uh, so as of yesterday, we had sent out our survey, which is a follow-up survey to the survey we completed last year. Uh, it's on Facebook. We're gonna be putting paper copies at the town hall and at the library. We'll speak to Jan about that. And, uh, we also shared it with elected officials and are just asking people to share it and, you know, get the word out, speed as much response as possible. We're working on Juneteenth. It's, uh, gonna be at the Riverfront Park. Saturday, June eighteenth, from eleven to two. Uh, we are working on a Pride event that will be in June. And all that will be taking place during the solidarity month that we have proposed, which will run from June first to June thirtieth. For that, we're working in coordination with the library, Youth Services, um, Chatham Children's Connection, and the Portland Social Justice Coalition. And we're also working on banners for Main Street with the solidarity theme. And then we are working for October for First Responders Month. We'll be honoring the police fire first responders. And we're also developing banners for that month. So that's about all that we're doing.
It has a lot going on.
Yeah.
Uh, April, can I ask, how's the survey results been so far? Are you getting a lot of feedback?
Yeah, so in the first day alone, we're at seventy responses to the survey, so that's good. Last year, we had a hundred and seventy altogether, so we're hoping for two hundred this year.
Okay. Great. You know, if everybody could share that, um, it'd be great, so... Thank you. Any, any questions for April? Thank you, April.
Thanks, April.
Thank you, PJ, for coming as well. All right, uh, moving on, we have, uh, the Board of Selectmen, uh, is the re-entry committee for COVID-related items. And, uh, I know Jan is here from the library tonight to, to speak on that. Before, just before Jan speaks, I, I do wanna say that I have, uh, I've recently consulted with Chatham Health Director, Russ Melmed, about our, um, current mask mandate at all town buildings. And so at this time, uh, what I would like to do is I would like to, at the end of February, along with the governor's execu- executive orders expiring, I would like to end that, that mandate, uh, at, at town buildings. And so with that, we would also then be moving back to in-person meetings for all the other boards and commissions beginning April one. So I think that this gives us some time. I think this is the direction that towns seem to be heading in right now. According to Russ, this is a good time with cases trending downwards, and obviously we'll continue to monitor that. And we'll, we'll continue to look at the, the cases, but it seems in line with, uh, where the state is heading at this point in time. So mask mandate will end, uh, at the end of this month, and then we'll begin moving back in person to in-person meetings. Not that we, we already are meeting in person, but for the other boards and commissions for April first. Uh, and with that, Jan, if you'd like to come up and speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, there's notes in case I forget some very important thing. Uh, yeah. So, yeah, I think that's probably the way we were heading too. We have a concern in the library, 'cause we have, whoops, hello. Um, so we have the, uh, a lot of the young kids, you know, of course, are coming in. We've got, we wanna start having the children's programs again in March for the younger kids. But Jen Rank, the children's, head of the children's services there, has a good plan. I think when they had them outside during the summer, they'd have hula hoops, the kids would stay distant, you know, with their little spots, so that's what we're gonna work on, those kinds of things. So, and they would keep their masks on in the programs. I think, um, I talked to Russ too, and I think, yeah, he's saying, you know, sometime in March, things will probably be getting back to more open-type situations and, and meetings and programs can happen again. We've had to turn a couple of groups down that wanted big programs and groups on. We have had smaller committee, commissions meeting, committees, rather. Um, and, you know, we've had some meetings of our own, so with just, you know, under ten people usually. So, uh, you know, that, we haven't had any problems with that, but I think, you know, the smaller groups are good. And then we, um, excuse me, we can't really use our, um, the Wagner Room, which is that room off the children's area, if you know, where the storytimes usually take place. We're gonna still have the things in the larger flood room, so they have more distance space and... Plus, we weren't yet ready to put all the toys out and things that have the children kinda congregate. We were thinking, you know, try to not encourage it, but, um, probably by, I think that April was probably a good day for that too, that you were talking about, so... Basically, it, you know, I mean, we've been getting by with a lot of programs that have been either hybrid or virtual, um, so it's been, you know, it's been good.
As of, as of now, I, I believe Airline Trail meets at the library. I'm trying to think of the other boards and commissions that would use it. The library board, right?
Complete Streets, the library board has met. Um, we actually decided to go back to virtual this last month. Um, probably, we're hoping next month, maybe we can meet, if that's all right with the board here, you know.
Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm wondering, just from a building usage, uh, because it's been so long since, since committees will have met in person and whatnot, do you, do you foresee time, uh, differences or, or conflicts, scheduling conflicts, I guess is a, is my question?
Yeah, that, I probably will have some, but, um, it, we really thought we'd have more, um, requests by now, but I think everybody's staying on Zoom still, you know, the virtual. So, um, yeah, there may be some as we go along, but we've always had that. And if, I don't know if the selectmen probably, you're probably staying here for some time, so that will help. We'll have an evening that...
I, I think this works out. I think this works out for us so far.
Depends. So, just, um, you know, we do sometimes have people asking for things a few months ahead and all, so we just work it out first come, first served, for the most part. You know, with town meetings trumping everybody, but other than that, yeah.
Well, thank you, Jan. I know how much, uh, COVID has thrown a wrench into so many plans over the past two years.
It's been fun.
You guys have done such a good job over at the library, so thank you.
People have been very good. They've been cooperative, we really, you know, some people are frustrated, and I think some haven't been coming in 'cause they don't wanna sit with a mask for a long time. A lot of people just come in and leave, and that's fine, get into books or whatever, but if they want to hang out, use the computers, they will be more comfortable, I think, if we take the masks off. We just have to watch how it goes with the kids, me.
Yeah, well, I mean, again, I think we should still encourage people to wear the masks. I'm certainly not saying to throw them away or anything, just at the, at a, at this point, I think that just the way, I know, I saw that, I believe, East Hampton and now, now Cromwell, or the schools are, are making masks optional. And so, uh, I think at this point, for the town buildings, we, we can go to a, uh, an optional for the masks, but, but still strongly encouraged.
Yeah, it would be good, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jan.
All right, you're welcome.
Does John have a question? Is his hand up?
Uh, yeah, guys. Um, I'm sorry, this is John Dillon. I'm going in for some hospital work tomorrow, so I wanna be home tonight. Um, just the, the use of video, are we going to keep that, uh, after for a while, even though we're going back to in-person for those that didn't wanna participate remotely?
I, to answer your question, John, I have no plans to change the current format of the Board of Selectmen meetings or the Board of Education meetings. I, I think that this has been working out quite well. I, I do see quite a few residents online right now via Zoom. And so we, I think that's working out well, and, and I think we should continue that.
I, I concur. I just wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, I mean, I think the only thing that we run into is that, um, there was, well, it could be the configuration here, but there was more room when we were in the library. That, that's the only thing is, if people do wanna start physically coming into the meetings, we're, we're a little more limited, um, with this room than we would've with the, with the flood room in the library. I mean, that's the only thing that would come up, but as long as obviously we maintain a hybrid approach, then you can, you can allow everyone to get on one way or another.
Mm-hmm. And that's, I think that's the plan going, going forward. So, yeah, thank you, Jan.
You're welcome.
All right. Next, under old business, we have appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Are there any, uh, appointments this evening?
Uh, yes, we have a couple. For the Conservation Commission, we have a nomination for Joe Spada.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd like a second.
All right, all those in favor of Joe Spada to the Conservation Commission signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passes?
And that was for a regular seat.
Okay.
Uh, next, for Committee for the Implementation of the Plan of Conservation and Development, regular seat, uh, Michael Nadolsky.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sean. And I just wanna say, I believe that we had a, a vacancy in this, um, in this board. I believe that Wayne Martin had resigned from, from this, uh, committee, so...
Yes, he resigned on the eleventh.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries.
Uh, next, we have a nomination for the Youth Services Board for an alternate seat for Ann Whalen.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. All those in favor of Ann Whalen to Youth Services signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Is it, uh, Ralph? Uh, under, moving on to new business, I had sent the Selectmen the RFP that was drafted for two forty-eight Brownstone Avenue. As you recall, this is the property that we've been in discussion about remediating. This is the property that we are strongly hoping becomes an economic driver for the town. And we are looking for a public-private partnership, which was part of the agreement with, uh, DECD when they gave us the additional Tupper grant, was to go out and, and secure a, um, uh, private partnership. And so the, uh, RFP has been created. It's ready to go out. Um, and so I just wanted to, uh, to, to thank, first, I wanted to, to thank our Economic Development Coordinator, uh, for, for her work on this. And also the Brownfields Redevelopment Focus Group for all of their work over the past, uh, two years on this, on this project. Because with the RFP being completed and going out, it, it completes the charge that this focus group was charged with. So they've done a, a wonderful job, and, uh, I know, I sincerely thank them for all of their hard work. And I look forward to the next phase of this, of this project, and we can, we can move forward as a board. So there's no, there's no action item with this, but I just wanted to bring this to the board's attention, that we're moving forward with this RFP, uh, on, as planned and on time. And that this, uh, hopefully will be a very good thing for the town, and I hope we get a lot of proposals with this. So with that, um, unless anyone has anything to add, can move on to item C on the agenda. And this is something that I've become very familiar with in, in recent days. I know that our Public Works Director, Bob Shea, is, is on this, uh, call tonight. And this is on our Municipal Solid Waste Management Agreement with Materials Innovation and Recycling Authority, or MIRA. And if you all have been paying attention and you may have seen in the news that this, that this plant is, is closing in Hartford. And this has been where we've been sending most of our, um, so, waste for, for, for many years now. And with the closing of this plant, they don't have a, a real plan in place to, to send the, the trash. And so what, the current plan is to actually ship this out of state, and, and, and other states will be, will be receiving the trash in Connecticut. So this isn't, this isn't a long-term plan, but it is affecting our agreement that we have with MIRA, and our costs are going up. And so before you is, and I, and I sent it to the Selectmen, but there's a letter from MIRA explaining what the tipping fee is, the proposed tipping fee is for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and it is, uh, one hundred and sixteen dollars. And this is up from the current amount, which is a hundred and five dollars. So it's up significantly, and one of the things that was important to the town is, right now, under the current agreement, we, we are receiving the recyclables. We are shipping the recyclables at no cost to the town. And so after some, some phone calls, we, we found out that with this proposed agreement, that remains in place. And so that's important to the town. I think that Bob did the numbers in that if we were to pay for the recyclables at that one hundred and sixteen-dollar tipping fee, we'd be looking at close to thirty thousand dollars additional to pay to, to MIRA. So it's good that we don't have to pay with this, and every town, and all of the surrounding towns are faced with the same issue on this. This is unfortunate. There's no, um, we could go out to bid. We are a small municipality, so we, we don't really have too many good options. I did send this to our legal, uh, team to review, and they've advised us that sticking to, sticking with this, this agreement is most likely Portland's best bet to, to keep costs as low as possible. And so that, that's been what we have been advised. I don't know if you wanna take action on this tonight, and, but we can certainly look, uh, look at this again in the future. We, we must vote on this, and by, I believe it's March thirty-first. So we do have a little bit of time, but I wanted to bring this to your attention, and I don't know if, if Bob's on, and he wanted to comment on, uh, on this agreement. Did I, did I sum it up so far, Bob?
I'm here. You did, Brian, and, uh, you know, the, really the catchphrase on this is it's gonna be, um, certainly a wall that is a moving target that we're gonna have to keep an eye on. After speaking with, um, the Vice President or the President of Operations today, um, things could change in the future. This is really the best that they have right now. I think they're trying to get as many agreements as they can, um, because the second option to this plan that is there is gonna, you know, that price is gonna, if you opt out of it, you wanna basically flow through the five years, a year at a time, those prices really haven't been determined yet. So I think the more people that, um, cities and towns that are currently, uh, currently have an agreement and agree to this new one, um, you know, that might change that price as well, but I think I agree with the, the legal side of it. Um, you know, based on our tonnage as far as weight, um, and recyclables, which is, you know, they, for, for this particular first portion of it, or first year, seem to be included in the price that may change, uh, based on how the recycling, um, program changes in the future. Uh, you know, those, those decisions will have to be made as, as those numbers come forward, but, you know, at eleven dollars, I think, is the difference, um, in cost. Um, ish there, you know, we're looking at a thirty-five, four thousand dollar change based on our average, um, waste, which is about three hundred and twenty ton a year. Uh, so, you know, I agree. Uh, I think that this is probably the best thing that we can do now. It's a very difficult situation for not only us, but so many other towns, especially the large cities that do volumes that are incredibly larger than ours. I think I agree with you for now that this is probably the best way to go.
Thank you, Bob. Does anyone have any questions for Bob?
Uh, I have one. Do we have an idea of what the cost would be for either the bags or the dump fee at the transfer station?
So that's a great question. Uh, you know, the bags is directly related to the cost of the MSW. That is the tier-one loan that we're contracted for, and that's what they charge us for, so that's the tonnage that we'll be looking at. Uh, you know, we're... It's difficult. We, we try to keep those costs down, and we're trying to manage that the best we can. But to be perfectly honest with you, we're starting to see our tonnage go down. Our recycling tonnage seems to be pretty, uh, robust. It's, it's there. Uh, we're averaging probably about eight tons of recycling a month compared to approximately, you know, thirteen, or I'm sorry, uh, thirteen ton of single stream, and then another eight ton of cardboard, so, you know, we have a total recycling there, um, you know, of a, of a good number. Our MSW is still coming in at an average of twenty-four, uh, ton a month compared to wall waste, which takes out over three hundred ton, um, a month from our residents. We, we're able to track that as well. They give us the numbers, so there's a lot of private, um, waste being removed from town. Uh, so we're gonna have to take a look at those, uh, bag prices to make sure that, you know, we're covering our cost, uh, to, you know, dispose. You know, it's not only covering the cost, uh, but it's also the transportation costs, you know. We're, we're moving to Hartford at least three times, if not four times, a week, uh, to do recycling waste. Our bulky waste is different, so we're hauling quite a bit, so there's a lot of cost to that. Um, that vehicle's expensive. We have a new one coming in, a lot of wear and tear on it, a lot of maintenance, and a lot of fuel costs. So we try to recover all of that. I think we're a little low, and that's hard to absorb. Uh, we, we raised the price of the bags two years ago. We might have to look at that, uh, to see, you know, where, what we could do to try to break even in that line.
So what are your thoughts on this? Do you wanna take an action tonight? Would you like to find out more information?
I'd like to read about, uh, we just got it today.
Yeah.
Seventeen pages of it, so I'd just like, I'd like to look it over a little bit.
Yeah, I don't, I don't blame you, yeah.
Bob, our, our demolition, you, we had a look at, uh, up in the cost of that too? The bulky waste?
No, like, we, we take that, we take that to a different facility, and that hasn't changed, and we seem to be doing pretty well on that. We've made some changes to, you know, how we're tracking that. We've made some changes to, you know, how we're tracking that and that seems to be going pretty well. So those line items look good. So I really think it's just the garbage side. If we were, if we had to make a change there, that would be the one that we would have to take a good look at based on this particular agreement. And that, that, that rise in the cost of us of being able to transfer that waste.
Do you know what the Airline Avenue facility is gonna be taken in? Are they just demolition or are they anything else?
Right now, their permit would only be demolition. There's some restrictions on municipal waste. But, you know, it's, it's early in the stages. We wanna certainly have a conversation with the owners there. They're, you know, we basically do business with them now. They are Murphy Road in Hartford and, you know, they're coming back. It's the same, uh, it's the same players there that, you know, we spoke with in the past. So yes, you are correct, Mike, that we should be having conversations to see, you know, what possibly we can do with them in the future. Volky waste, you know, we're with them now. Certainly gonna save us transportation costs if they can take ours there. But as far as I know, looking as close to this permitting phase, it doesn't include municipal waste. We may be able to make some changes or look to work with them to make changes on that as well in the future. There's potential.
And one last question is, uh, this might be minute, but the cardboard bin that you guys have in, uh, I know like when snowstorms, rainstorms, it, that gets weighted down by water. Is there any thoughts about covering that up for weight issues?
Yeah, that, that's a good question. We do have a, a cover of that particular, we've changed some of the, we've lost some containers. We have one order which hopefully will be delivered soon, which will, that comes with a cover. But now we need to, you know, protect that, that product a little better. We do have covers on most of the containers. We have to do that for deep standards, especially for our bulky waste. Our garbage obviously is contained in our compactors. But yeah, I think we can do better with that, Mike, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you have any questions?
Oh, John?
Yeah, Bob, in your opinion, is there any benefit to us of what would be the benefit of signing a year-by-year versus a multi-year agreement? Would there be any benefit to going year-by-year for us?
Yeah, that's the difficult part, John, because we, there's no price right now for that option. And I think that they're gonna try to determine what that price is based on how many people or how many towns and cities agree to the first option of the five-year plan. And those would be the ones that are already on your, the agreement like we are with the facility. So it's very difficult. That, that number could be less, uh, just to try to keep a few towns involved as long as they can. I certainly think it'll change drastically as it moves forward. And I think the legal counsel that we had at it thinks that five-year plan seems to be the better longevity. And as far as price for us, I'd have to hopefully agree. They all could flip right over. My conversation today was based on volume. You know, their business is based on volume of waste, especially for wasted energy. And that's changing. And if they lose a city like Hartford who is looking to possibly go out and have our queues out to change that, that loss in volume could change this whole contract following year. The numbers could change drastically. They could, they could go up considerably just because of that loss of volume. So I think this whole thing is still playing out, but it, it's hard to choose between the two. I, I do believe that maybe this one's the best for now. It seemed that way talking with them and based on what they're looking for today. And the fact that we're still able to send our recyclables there for free, we wouldn't really know what that price would be. It wouldn't be $116 a ton, but it could be half of that. And, you know, you're looking at an additional cost of even at half of $15,000 versus our $3,500 now, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Bob? Yeah, certainly a tough, tough situation to be in. And unfortunately, all of the, our surrounding towns are all in the same boat on this. So we'll, we'll come back, we'll do a little more research to see if there's any, any better alternatives. And then, and then bring it back before the board for, for next meeting. Does that sound good with everyone?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is item D under new business, a proposed mailbox policy. Now this is something that Bob had, had worked on. I know that, and, and Bob can speak more to this than I can, but I do know that our Public Works Department, which does a wonderful job making sure that our roads are, are cleaned with the snow during inclement weather, they do, they do a great job. But sometimes during the course of work, a mailbox can, can get hit sometimes. And, and so the town or snow sometimes as well can cause, uh, the compacted snow can push the mailbox and damage the mailbox. And so when this happens, town residents will call Town Hall and, and typically the Public Works Department will replace those, those mailboxes as they're damaged. And so what, what I believe that we've been seeing is that sometimes with these mailboxes, it, it may not be the, the town plow that's, that's damaged the, the box. It might be a, a rotted out post that is, that is the problem. So I think that this policy that, that is before you is to address that so that the town would not be replacing mailboxes unless that they were, and it's physically struck. So I can, Bob, is, is that, do you wanna speak on that first before I go on?
Yeah, it is. I think you summed it up. What we're, what I'm trying to do is create some type of guidance. It's not only for us. It, it gives us, it allows us to go out and inspect and actually give something back to the homeowner that is related to a policy that they can refer to. I've been asked by many when we discussed that, you know, we haven't physically hit the mailbox because, um, you know, that's pretty easy to, to tell when your 2,400 pound plow hits a mailbox. Uh, you know, these plows are pretty heavy duty and usually, you know, we'll shout our post, we'll find it in somebody else's yard. Or, you know, we'll hit it hard enough where there's obvious, um, there's obviously damage that we can obtain that is from a plow. But some of the issues that we see are just really that the weight of the snow coming off the plows is pushing the mailboxes over. That can withstand that pressure because of their age. You know, all of us have seen it. But, you know, there's a lot of these posts out there that we've been weed whacking around for 20 years and they're about the size of a paralyte. Um, and, you know, they're rotted and unfortunately, when that snow leaves the road, it has no chance. It's really not the, our issue. Everybody needs to maintain their mailbox for the U.S. Postal Service. And there's guidances on how far away from the curb. And, you know, most of these mailboxes that do get struck, because we do hit them, unfortunately, it's, it's in the middle of the night when it's dark and the snow is blowing skyways. It's difficult to see and we certainly will take care of those mailboxes as we have in the past and we continue to do. It's the ones that we know that probably should have been replaced that don't make it through the storm. Now, I don't think that the taxpayers really should be responsible to replace those if they were damaged or older or should have been, um, you know, fixed prior to that. Mail, a lot of mailboxes are falling off. Posts that are still stable just because they're not fastened properly or the board under the mailbox is rotten and it's not fastened properly. Lots of times we can make quick repairs to those because the boxes are damaged. But even saying that, they need to be maintained. And I don't think the town is in a position where, um, that we should, you know, main, really maintain someone's mailbox so that it can withstand the snow. They should be doing that. And a lot of the mailboxes also are leaning out too far on the road. Those are the ones that unfortunately we, we will strike if we're along the curb line. We're hoping that those can be repaired, um, you know, be the 68 inches off the curb line and the 45 inches from the ground that the USPS is, is doing. So really, in a nutshell, not to, to bring this much farther is the fact that at least we'll have some type of policy that the residents can look at. They can, we can have something to go by so that when we go out and do an inspection, we can tell them what we found and it agrees with some of the policies. There's policies all through the state. I looked at probably over a dozen. I tried to come up with one that I thought was in-between. Some are much more strict than this. Uh, some are, nope, we won't do a thing, even if we hit it. Uh, and that includes the state of Connecticut, state of Connecticut will not replace the mailbox. It doesn't matter if they, they take it home with them, that one will be replaced. So I tried to find a way to meet in the middle, um, to be able to work with our, our residents and, and be fair with, with, you know, this particular topic. I've been asked for a policy every time I'm asked. They don't have one, so they assume that, no, they don't have one, so you're gonna have to fix it. So I'm looking for some guidance, that's all.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions?
Hey, Bob, quick question. How many, how many mailboxes a year get whacked?
Well, it depends on the winter, for sure. Uh, how many we actually hit? Well, you know, we'll hit probably a half a dozen, maybe four to six. The amount of mailboxes that we repair or replace are much more than that. You know, we could be a dozen, we could be up to 18. You know, people will call if their mailbox is loose and it wasn't fastened, they'll call and want a new one. If your mailbox door was open and that is picking up on the road and gets damaged by the snow leaving the road, they'll call and want the mailbox.
Got it.
You know, things. So, yeah, I mean, it's not a lot of money. It's, it's, uh, you know, it's the labor that takes away from what we're doing and, you know, we're spending money on stuff that really people should be maintaining.
So Bob, I, I think that's great that you tried to meet in the middle somewhere there. Cause obviously, um, you know, I know the few times that we've had it happen, it was because they physically struck it. So, um, you know, you're trying to cover that situation and you're right, people do let them go and rot out and then, you know, just the slightest thing could take them off. So I think it's a fear, you know, fear, um, settlement in the middle to, to cover those that should legitimately be covered.
Anyway, I'm just gonna read the policy just so it's into the minutes or into the record. So Town of Portland, Connecticut, Public Works Department, Policy Statement on Winter Mailbox Damage. Mailboxes and their posts are the responsibility of the individual homeowner to maintain. Within the specifications set forth in the guidelines for installation, during a storm, when roads are being plowed, snow or ice may, may hit mailboxes. Please make sure that your mailbox is firmly attached to the post and that the post is not rotted. Damage to the mailbox and/or post from snow thrown from the Town of Portland, s-snow plows, is not the town's responsibility. The town is not liable and does not pay claims for mailboxes or posts that are damaged due to the inability to withstand the force of plowed snow. Homeowners have the sole responsibility of repair or replacement. If a mailbox and/or post are physically struck by a snow plow blade or some portion of the truck, then the town will replace or repair the damaged item at our discretion. Conformity to guidelines for installation of a mailbox and/or post will be considered. Homeowners must notify the Department of Public Works at 860-342-6733 within seven days from the date of the storm to be eligible for repair or replacement. Decorator or custom mailboxes or posts that receive direct contact from snow removal equipment will be replaced with a standard mailbox and/or post. The town will not reimburse any homeowner who replaces the damaged post or mailbox themselves. The process to determine if your mailbox and/or post were physically struck will include the following. Physical condition of box and/or post. If it was physically struck, it will be very obvious. Two, position of box and/or post in relation to the line which the plow traveled along the road edge. Three, evidence of plow or truck leaving the surface of the road, curbing or lawn damage, tire marks, off-the-road surface, paint marks on box or post. Four, review of evidence of damage resulting from an unknown source. This could include private contractors, plowing driveways, delivery trucks, out, or out-of-control cars, et cetera. If it is determined that the town is responsible for the damage, the town will repair or replace your mailbox and/or post as soon as possible. Temporary repairs may have to be performed for your mail to be delivered. Ground conditions may warrant a delay until spring to install post replacements. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact the Department of Public Works at 860-342-6733 or via email at rshay@portlandct.org. And on the back is the report to file with your mailbox gets had. So what do you think? Do you wanna, someone wanna make a motion to approve the Portland's Policy Statement on Winter Mailbox Damage? I'll make the motion for that.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Motion made by Bobby, seconded by Sean to approve the Policy Statement on Winter Mailbox Damage. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extension? Motion carries. Thank you. And thank you, Bob, for your work on this. I know you put some time and effort into that.
Thank you all. It's gonna help the guys and the crews to have some standard knowledge we can go by, so thank you all for that.
Thanks, Bob. All right. Next up on the agenda, item E. And let me get the right color for the packet. Is it green? It is green. And this is the inter-local agreement with the City of Middletown for fiscal year '22 through '27. And so this is an agreement now, we've been, we've had this inter-local agreement with the City of Middletown for almost 20 years now. And this has been, this has really been beneficial to both towns, I would say. And, and we do have a, a great relationship with, with the City of Middletown. And so the agreement before you is identical to the, the agreement that we've had in place with the exception of what the Town of Portland ends up paying. And so the last agreement that was signed by former First Select Woman Susan Bransfield, at the end of the five years of the contract, there was a, one year where, um, there could be an extension. And during that year, there was a 0% increase over the last year. So we're coming from a 0% year. So I know that the City of Middletown has had upgrades to their equipment, significant upgrades to technology. And I believe that they, they wanted to, you know, Portland to pay some of that, some of that share. So if, if you look under, on page two of the agreement, Cost of Services, you see that the, the costs are, are rising for the next, for each of the next five years, basically. And so unfortunately, like everything else, costs seem to be increasing. But this is, I, I believe this is a good agreement. And it will ensure that our, our dispatch services are continued to be maintained and that we will, um, still have the, the service that the Town of Portland needs for emergencies. And also for storage and, and prisoners, prisoner transfer as well. There really is a lot that we, that we partner with the City of Middletown for, so. Does anyone have any questions?
What was fiscal year, uh, '21 to '22? What was the, what are we coming off of?
Zero percent.
No, but what was it, what was the amount, dollar amount?
I believe it was $125,000.
So a $12,000 increase?
Yeah. Yes. Um, we had our...
Um, when we had our, our meeting with, uh, Captain Malardo, wasn't he talking about we might be on the hook about, um, having our criminals stay here and all that? Like, that the state might be coming down on us to do some upgrades with our police department?
There, that is part of the, of the police bill that was passed. Now, nothing has been, has been finalized on that. There, there has been talk that should this, what you're talking about occur where there's, I believe there's two sets of police standards. And I believe the, the fear for the Town of Portland would be that the Town of Portland would be held to the most strict standards and that would force us to have to upgrade our, our own Portland police facilities. And so, I, I don't think that that's happened yet. And I know Captain Malardo would, if he were here, he'd be able to speak more on the matter. But certainly that is an issue that we need to, you know, be aware of. But, um, I know for the time being, this is for us, we would still, we would, everything that we enjoy with the city of Middletown would be in place moving forward. So, um, certainly, we do need to pay attention to, uh, any changes in the law and the impacts. Like, you'll notice that, um, I know our police will all have body cameras by July one of this year. And so, that was another item of, that came up with the bill. And so, uh, there's, as, as police matters change, different, different requirements change as well. And so, we do have to keep up with them. But at this time, I do know that we are complying as needed.
Yeah. I guess what I was just getting at is like, if some of these services that Middletown are providing us, that we're paying for them, and all of a sudden the state tells us, no, we're on the hook for it, are we still gonna be held to that same dollar amount? If like, hey, we're not using your services anymore, you know, are we, we're still on the hook for five years with that? But I don't think those changes will come over the next five years. I hope not. Cause it'll, it'll hurt us financially to make those adjustments. But I was just concerned if we would still be on the hook if, say, two years, they say, oh, no, you gotta, you gotta have your own dispatch, you gotta do this, that.
Well, I don't think it's our own dispatch. I think that, say, we were to have our own, uh, we were to have to upgrade the police station to, to store prisoners overnight, I don't know. And, and again, Captain Malardo would be able to speak more on the matter. But I think that the bulk of the cost of this agreement is with our dispatch and paying for, for the dispatch services. I don't know how much the, the, the storage of prisoners i- is impacting these numbers. I think it's more for, um, and again, you know, the cost of this agreement is, is still a very beneficial, um, deal for the town instead of having our own dispatch would, which would be a much more significant expense.
That's, that's the exact, I was thinking the same thing and then you used the exact example that sticks in my mind. You know, the dispatch, you still want them to take the calls coming in. But if you were forced in a situation where you had to, to main, to keep your prisoners on site here, um, that would be the question, the only question I would have as well.
If, if that happened, what, you know, could they force you to do it in a two-year period if you weren't already equipped? So, I think we would have some time in there to be able to equip our, our facilities. So, I think within, in real, you know, being realistic, if they came up two years from now, we, we would have more than three years. You couldn't build out what they wanted.
Yeah, I, I agree. It might hit towards the end of our five-year term. I don't think it would happen next year, next two, three years, but.
But even, but so, th- this number is just for dispatch. The number for prisoner housing says it is billed each month to the city of Portland. That depending on how many prisoners they have, and the same as evidence. So, that is just a dispatch number. That's not prisoner and that's not.
Evidence.
Storage evidence.
That's the question I have, Ryan. Was, was there any negotiation of those dispatch costs undertaken? Or is this just what they provided us, Chris? I'm looking for some, um, percentage increase here and I don't see a pattern to it. From twenty-four to twenty-five, it's a ten thousand dollar increase. But then from twenty-five to twenty-six, it's a nine thousand dollar increase. I'm just curious whether there's any, any negotiating that could occur on those costs. Because what they mentioned, the police accountability, there's, there's gonna be some costs that we're gonna incur, you know, even above and beyond the possibilities of having to make upgrades at a police station. So, you know, if anything we can save is worth it.
Uh, John, I, I will say that there, there was significant negotiation. The numbers that were started with were significantly higher. Um, and I, it, it is, you know, I, I think this is the best that the Town of Portland could, could get under the circumstances. I think that the city of Middletown is aware that, you know, their costs have gone up. And for, for a long time, and I don't wanna speak for them, but Portland has enjoyed a, a, you know, very reasonable rate. And, and so, what you see here is, is the, the effects of my negotiation and, and trying to, to get Portland the best deal that, that we possibly could, um, which I, which I think we have. I, I don't think that I could do any better. Um, I, I know that I certainly, I tried my best on this, so.
You know, the fact that, I just wanted to know if there was some negotiation that occurred. You, you answered my question. Thanks, man.
Yes, there was. Thank you.
Now, East Hampton recently went through something like this too, right? How did they fare, do you know?
They're much higher. They, um, and so, that's, I believe they're, they're in the two-hundred thousands for East Hampton. Uh, and they, I believe they're using Glastonbury. And so, um, and so, if we were to look elsewhere, th- that would probably be the first place that, that we looked and, and they're already significantly more expensive, so.
And it's a further away for response.
And, and it's further away for response. No, um, you know, our, our service with Middletown, our relationship is excellent. This is, uh, you know, i- it is an increase. It's, it's eight percent in, in year one. And so, uh, I, I don't like coming to you and saying that there's an eight percent increase of anything. Um, but unfortunately, we, we did start off significantly higher. And, uh, and this is, this is the best that, um, we can do. Uh, we make a motion under? Yeah, there, there is a resolution before you. If someone would like to read the resolution and, and move it to adoption.
I'll, uh, read the resolution.
Move it to adoption.
Move it to adoption. Resolution, Board of Selectmen, Town of Portland, Connecticut, February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, interlocal agreement between the Town of Portland and the city of Middletown for dispatching services. Resolve that the agreement attached between the Town of Portland and the city of Middletown for dispatching services for a period of five years, beginning July first, two thousand twenty-two and ending on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Cost of services as outlined in section B, one of the agreement is hereby approved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Bobby. There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the interlocal agreement between the Town of Portland and the city of Middletown for dispatching services. Is there any discussion?
I, I just have one, one more question. So, I know this covers, uh, the dispatching cost. How much have we spent in the typical last years on prisoner housing costs? I mean, it doesn't say specifically how we spent a thousand, ten thousand. You know, what kind of cost is that? I know it varies obviously on what the police do, but is that a small insignificant cost compared to the rest of it?
Honestly, I, I don't have the answer on that in front of me. That would be a question for either Captain Malardo or.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Tom.
Okay.
Alright, I'll get back to the board in a minute.
I would, just one more last thing is like, looking at that number, a hundred and forty thousand dollars roughly. Uh, now, thinking about it, it's actually a pretty decent number considering that you're paying the wages for probably two or three dispatchers and equipment and everything. So, really, you're getting a, a pretty decent deal for having dispatcher basically a mile over the bridge, so. Uh, it's actually not that, not that bad. If we were to provide that ourselves, would be much more costly with, uh, with all your benefits and all that. So, yeah, no, it's not, it's not that bad of an increase.
Thank you. Yeah, it's basically two dispatchers is what we would get on our own for this, so. Should we move to the question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alright, we'll move on to refunds of excess payments. It's only one comment. I'll read it.
Um, refund of excess payments, make a motion for a refund to A C A R Leasing Limited for one hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Ralph will second it.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Alright, moving on to status and committee reports. I will go first. I just wanna give an update. Um, we did receive some unfortunate news this week that our Economic Development Coordinator, Mary Dickerson, has, has resigned or will be resigning at the end of the month. And, um, and I believe that there was, uh, there was an issue with a, um, at a recent Economic Development Commission meeting. And so, I just wanted to, um, to address the fact that, um, that this is, is, has been looked into and that there, um, there was a member who, who has since submitted, um, their resignation uh, as well on the Economic Development Commission. So, I think, you know, when, when we have new, new board members and new, and new committee members that are starting, sometimes they don't understand, you know, all the, all the rules immediately. And, uh, so this was, this was unfortunate. And, um, and so, certainly, uh, we, we wish Mary the best of success and, and, um, and, you know, it's been a pleasure working with her. Is that it?
That's all, yeah. Your turn.
Okay, I'll go. I did, um, because of other things that went on, I didn't get an opportunity to actually be at that EDC meeting and I also missed water and sewer this month. But I have other ones that I can talk to. First of all, uh, Long Range Capital. Uh, last week, there was three meetings to meet with the department heads. I, I, I attended those meetings. They went through, um, the important capital items that they each wanted. And, uh, there was a deliberation by the commission to, to discuss what they would put forward um, as the suggestions are, um, to the First Selectmen and the Finance Director. I was not at that meeting. That was yesterday, cause I was at the Board of Ed, Board of Selectmen joint meeting. But they were doing that yesterday, uh, putting that together. So, they're, uh, working through the process, uh, for their charge. Park and Rec, uh, there's a few interesting items I'll pass on. The, uh, Parking Rec is working to come, uh, work with the Middletown Stage Company, who has performed plays at the, up at the high school or middle school. I think they did it last year, so they're working with them to make sure that that can, uh, they can work and do that again this upcoming summer. The, uh, since we're on the summer thing, we could talk, he, uh, Nate has started working on, checking on his summer staff as he prepares for the summer, as it'll be here before you know it. With regards to the spring, there's a couple of big items that are happening. Um, we'll, 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 we'll put the Easter egg hunt tie into the spring. We'll call it spring. But the tentatively, the date has been set for, for, for April ninth for the Easter egg hunt and hopefully be able to do that outside again. We'll have to see how the weather plays out for us. They are, the Parking Rec is offering a flag football program in the spring and it's had excellent, um, six, it's showing a, a large number of registrations considering how long it's been out there. So, that's, looks like it could be a very good program for the spring. And, um, they're also offering a boating safety certification class again. And there's, uh, they're expanding their youth arts program as well that they're trying to put out there. And the only other thing I would note is that they did talk about, Little League did, uh, um, put forward a suggestion of a strategy in terms of using a concession stand. And, um, it was a good presentation, a good proposal, something that'll be looked at. A little tough to think we're gonna, actually, they'll be able to actually get it in place for this year. But it's certainly something to work with. And in the meantime, we, there was good discussion about ensuring that the Little League can do what they have to in order to provide, um, food for the players in the summer programs. So, as required by the agreements for the tournaments. So, um, we're moving, it was a good discussion. We're moving forward with them and I, I think it's, it's working well. It'll, it'll work well for the summer. Uh, let's see what else. And the last item, uh, the last one is the library and the Board of Directors for the library meet tomorrow, so. Next week, next meeting I'll have something.
Thank you, Ralph. Anyone else have any studs?
I was at the February seventh Water and Sewer Commission meeting. And, um, Bob Shay gave his report. Uh, he mentioned that they had a meeting yesterday with one of the, uh, companies with the RFP right there. Today? Oh.
Sorry.
Oh, okay. Sorry. And then you have another meeting on the twenty-second, I guess?
We're, we're in the middle of reviewing the, the RFP, so we don't wanna.
Gotcha.
Mention that.
Sorry. Um, drive-by transmitting is working very well. It allowed them to get, uh, filling, caught up to date, uh, quicker than usual. And they're installing more meters, um, to help with that, reducing quite a bit on the labor. Uh, Jim Tripp brought up that could they put in on our second, uh, tranche of the Federal Recovery, uh, Rescue Act money to use for upgrading meters? Um, Bob said he'd look into that. Uh, let's see. Jim also questioned if there was going to be, if there was talk about another subcommittee, um, with the Board of Selectmen, like they had in the past. And Bob said that at this point, he didn't think they needed it. But he did recommend that someone from the Water and Sewer come to one of our meetings a month and give a report. And he also told them that they have a lot of work ahead of them. And that's about it. The meeting ended fairly quickly. Lot of work.
And we thank them for their work on, on Water and Sewer and it's ongoing. Any other status and committee reports?
Uh, yeah, the schools facility, uh, committee met, or actually held a joint meeting with the Board of Education and Board of Selectmen last night. There were two groups that spoke, uh, the first, first gentleman spoke about the, um, enrollment projections over the next ten years. Um, I'd just like to say that it didn't, uh, doesn't seem like it's gonna be too bad. About a five percent increase over the next ten years. And then, uh, the second group, the Friar Group, spoke about their, uh, what they were, uh, looking into for the schools facilities, about, uh, repairs, different options, uh, that Portland might look into, um, in the up and coming years of, uh, how to move the students around to different schools or repurpose a school. But they're just digging into that now, so they don't, they don't have all the details yet. But they plan on having, uh, something to report to us by, uh, by May, so. If, Bobby, you were on that meeting, right, last night?
Yes.
So, is there anything that you remember hearing that?
Yeah, they, they said they just started their three reports they were working on. They'd have more next month, but the complete report would be, uh, closer to May. And they talked about a lot of different percentages for new construction, uh, And they talked about a lot of different percentages for new construction, refurbishing schools, stuff like that, like what percentages the state covers. And how there is a pers- percentage that the state uses for how many students are in the school, and the square footage per student. And two of our schools are close to the limit, and it shows two of our schools have excess room.
Yeah, well said. I think the rebate rate's going to be the, the question with this. But I was impressed with, with the Friar Architecture. Yeah, no, they did a good job presenting, both groups did. And I'm looking, I, I know, I think we're all looking forward to these reports once they become available, so. We'll have to stay tuned and, and keep, keep looking ahead.
Yeah, I thought they did a good, uh, job explaining how they're going to broach it.
All right, any other status and committee reports? Can move on to public comment, is there any public comment?
I O N.
Yep.
Good evening, Charlie. This is Ellen Donald. And, uh, joining you tonight to once again remind you of the significance of the River Cod funded E sixty-six quarter study. You may recall, I mentioned this to you once before. And I may continue to mention it, I think it's very important. If you're serious about economic development in, in the future, I invite you to become familiar with, with this study and its recommendations. It's, I think, a real opportunity to restore Main Street in Portland to what it was once as a town center for economic, you know, activity. And at the same time, to eliminate the gridlock that we, you know, experienced at the Main Street and Mall of history. It's a very significant, um, compelling document that I, I highly endorse. Thanks.
Thank you, Ellen. Is there any other public comment in the audience? All right. I have nothing on the follow, oh, no, excuse me. Informal discussion, does anyone have any informal discussion?
I don't.
Oh. Oh, Kit, oh, sorry, Kitch, did you have something to say?
Yes, I did. Ryan, I was wondering if you could give an explanation of the five years of the, uh, five-year cost, the annual increase in the five-year cost for the dispatch services associated with Middletown?
Um, uh, say, can you say the question again, Kitch?
Yes, um, you talked about the cost for the first year of the five-year plan, an eight percent increase. What are, what are the additional increases over the five years of the contract for the police dispatch?
I can get you that. I believe it was an eight, seven, six, five, Kitch, five, five?
Eight, seven, eight, seven, six, five?
Yeah, eight, seven, six, five, five, I believe.
Eight, seven, six, five, five, okay.
And with the.
And, and when you were speaking about it, when you first talked about it, you said that it was zero percent last year. So it was a zero percent increase last year. Because that, we didn't have it for a year.
Yeah, correct, cor- correct, correct, yes.
Okay. I was thinking that would have been a real bonus.
I, I wish we did, yeah.
Yeah, that would be great. Um, and, and the other question I have is this, um, based on what has occurred recently, what kind of vetting is there for people who are appointed to boards?
Mm-hmm. Well, I mean, I don't know if I, we want to get too much into, into the vetting with, I, if, in regard.
I'm not asking about anyone specific, I'm just asking in general, what kind of vetting is done?
Well, honestly, I'll, I'll be honest, and I do want to talk about this, Kitch. I think this was, for me, this was a, a, what happened most recently with the Economic Development Commission was, taught me a valuable lesson that, that more vetting needs to be done. And, and so I, um, you know, I, I certainly will, will, you know, take, take responsibility for that and, and say, you know, move, going forward. Uh, I know that, I think both, both parties typically do a good job at, at vetting candidates. And so, um, and so that's something that I think needs to be looked at in, in greater detail in the future. And so, uh, one, I think, one thing that I plan on doing is, is meeting and speaking with every candidate for a, for a commission prior to, to their appointment. So that, to make sure that we're all on the same page with, uh, and also make sure that the, that the ethics are followed as well. So that's something that, that I'm, I'm looking to do. And I think that this, as unfortunate as it was, is a learning experience, and, and we're going to do better next time.
I hope so. Um, and finally, I would like to offer my sincere thanks to Mary Dickerson for all of her work over the, over many years. I think she will be an incredibly hard person to replace. As a matter of fact, I don't think there will be a replacement for her of her standards, her ethics, and the value she has brought to the town of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitch. I just want to say typically, we don't interact with public comment, just for the, you know, I just, in this situation, I did. But normally, public comment just speaks, but, um, so, thank you, Kitch. So we can move, unless there's more public comment, move forward to general and informal discussion?
Um, I guess I just got one question, and this was, this goes back to the old board before you, Ryan, is, where do we stand with the sidewalk redevelopment on Free Stone through Chatham Court, I believe it went down? Have you heard any, has that crossed your desk at all?
Yeah, and I, I believe it, it was, we were waiting on the state, is what I want to say. I did receive an email not too long ago, and I don't know if, if Bob's still here and he wants to pop on. There he is.
I'm here. Yeah, Mike, um, so that's a, that's a pretty difficult design of this project that we took on. So we are probably ninety percent complete on the design. We are waiting for some, well, actually, D O T is going to spend quite a bit of time on it because we're spending a lot of time on, you know, crossing and making changes down on the Marlboro Street side here, Cumberland Farms. We're also reached out to the railroad because we have some questions related to crossing a section of rail there into the parking lot from Airline Avenue versus trying to make a big loop around that intersection, thinking it might be safer to have a pathway through there. We'll have to look for an easement on private property to be able to do that. So there's a few things that we're still working on. We're hoping that through the summer, we'll get everything ready to go out to bid. My plan was to be able to start work late summer, early fall. Uh, but depending on how the process goes through with D O T, especially the inspection of the plan and the current authorization to move forward based on their, their lack of work right now, um, it might not happen until the spring of the following year. But we're doing everything we can to push that forward.
Okay, you answered my next question with timeline that you really don't know, but your best guess would be late fall, early spring possibly.
Definitely.
Gotcha, thanks.
Thank you, Bob. Good question. Any other items? And I have nothing on the follow-up items, so I will say that we're, it's a rather early night tonight, but we do have budget season next month, so there'll be plenty more later evenings. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Bobby. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention? All right, motion carries at eight forty-six. Thank you.